Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 21st, 2008. This evening's city council will be meeting in regular session in a few minutes, but first we have a public hearing on a CHIP grant. Please take her over.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Doug.
My name's Doug Stanley, and I'm with Hawking Athens Perry Community Action. Our agency has worked with the city of Athens in the past to administer the Community Housing Improvement Program, or CHIP, for that. The purpose of this public hearing tonight, which is the second of two public hearings, is to notify the public that the city of Athens intends to apply and submit a grant to the Community Housing Improvement Program in the amount of $315,900. That grant will be submitted to the Ohio Target Development. The application deadline is Friday, May 2nd, which would be the week on this coming Friday. This will be the one, two, three, fourth grant application that the city of Athens has submitted over the past several years, going back to 2003 or so, I'm not sure the exact year. The city currently has a grant that will run out this year. It ends August 31st of this year. This grant, if funded, will enable the city to continue many of the same kinds of things it's been doing in the past several years. Specifically, this grant application will provide three separate housing activities. The first thing it will do is provide home repair services. These are for owner-occupied homes, residents in the city of Athens. Home repair refers to an approach to a house that addresses generally one or two health or safety items, perhaps a roof, a furnace, the house could be rewired, new plumbing, that sort of thing, but one or two items. The city's application will propose that a total of 13 homes will receive home repair services. The total amount of dollars spent on that will be $125,000. The second activity, which funds are requested, is called home rehabilitation. Home rehabilitation is a much more extensive approach to a home. It involves addressing all of the major mechanical, electrical, plumbing, heating, all those various systems within the home, as well as any structural issues that may need attention. The city's proposing, in this application, to provide private rehab, again, which is for homeowners, for three families. The total of dollars budgeted would be $114,000. It's roughly $38,000 per home. The final activity is called home ownership. In past years, when the application has been submitted, it was called down payment assistance. It's the same activity, it's the same work that will be done. There's money budgeted in this grant to help one family purchase a home in the city of Athens and provide actual assistance with the down payment and closing costs to purchase that home, and then additional funds to bring it up to the same rehabilitation standards in the private rehab activity. So essentially, you help the family buy a home, and then fix it up and bring it up to the state rehab standards. There's $39,000 budgeted for that activity. The remaining funds in the grant application to bring it up to $315,900 would be for Fair Housing Services and administration of the grant. That's a total of $37,900. The total of all four of those come to $315,900. That's right in line with the previous grant applications that the city has submitted and that have been funded. Again, for council's information, the past three grants that the city has submitted, all of the money has been spent and all of the activities completed, and in a couple cases, a couple more homes were able to be done because we were able to keep the average cost per unit down a little bit. So I'm hopeful we might be able to do that with this one, too, if it's funded. Again, the application deadline is May 2nd, and I believe council has already dealt with legislation related to this application. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Doug, what is a financial qualifying criteria for the family looking to buy their first home?
Okay. As submitted, the application proposes that the same income guidelines apply for any of these activities, whether it be home repair, private rehab, or the home ownership. It's based on what's considered the area median income, as established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Those dollar amounts fluctuate with family size, family composition. But currently, for a one-person family, it's $29,000 per year. For two people, $33,150. Three people, $37,300. Four people, $41,450. It goes on and on. So it's not necessarily a low-income program. It's classified as a low and moderate income program. Those are the income guidelines.
And the 13 homes that you have identified, are those already identified and the projects worked out? No.
No, they're not. I can say that that's the one sort of service that this grant provides, that there's never a problem getting enough people for that. And we might even have a slight waiting list on that, a couple people that weren't able to get to this round. I wouldn't swear to that, but basically, no, they're not currently identified.
Thank you. Other members of council? Remember nicely.
Is the program then listed on the city's website so that people can go and find about it?
I don't know if it was this past time.
I don't think it is.
We can certainly do that if funded. All of the services, all of the dollars have been spent for the current program that ends in August. But we can certainly do that if it's funded.
Okay.
Yes?
Generally, our local contractors used as well for the...
Yeah, all of this work, our agency, again, as I said, you know, there are some ad new dollars involved in this grant. We have staff on board that handle all of the home inspections, provide all the work estimates, the work write-ups, the job estimates, the construction management, that sort of thing. But all the work itself is done by private contractors. We solicit, we maintain a contractor list, their screen, to make sure they meet basic insurance requirements, bonding, and reference checks, that sort of thing.
Other questions? Mayor Wild.
Okay, I'm aware of the fact that the home repair service, as I said, is a waiting list. We can only do a certain percentage of the total money for that, if I remember.
Right. We budgeted $125,000 for that, which is a little less than $10,000 per family. That's $125,000 at most that can be requested.
And the other thing that's changed is we have to, if we have a high amount of revolving loan fund, we have to take some of that money and put it towards the grant.
Right. There were two changes, you're correct there. Real briefly, the first one was dealing with some of the nuts and bolts of the application, whether or not the city wanted to target a particular neighborhood or a couple neighborhoods in town, and it was determined it was just simply not feasible for this go-around to do that. But the other change in the scoring, rating of these applications, because it is a competitive application process statewide, is that the state of Ohio has indicated in the application instructions that it's going to be looking at the various grantees, whether it be cities or counties, applying for this money, to see what the status of their block grant revolving loan funds are. They've indicated that in terms, the city of Athens does not currently, well, has a housing revolving loan fund now, but there's no money yet. So that one's off the table. But in terms of the economic development, the revolving loan fund, the state has set a cap, a limit, they're not going to touch anything below $200,000 in that revolving loan fund. And they, I can't say, I can't speak for them, but they most likely will not touch anything slightly above that $200,000 limit. Yet the city, in this case, can show that either that money is committed, or you have a pending deal for that, or you have had some activity within that loan fund in recent times. And they've indicated that they'd love to see communities use some of that as matching money for this particular grant application. Whether or not the city chooses to do that, you know, is up to you. It certainly would make the application more competitive. There's always a chance, because I believe the loan fund now, Kathy, has $280,000 in it. You know, I don't know. I would guess, purely guess, that if the city were to put, to commit, you know, a relatively small amount of that toward the CHIP application as match, towards meeting the goal, the target match money, which is 12.5% of the total grant requested. So in the case of the city, we're requesting $315,900. That comes to, let me dig this out.
About $40,000.
It comes to $39,490. Of that $39,490, our agency is going to be committing resources that we will be able to bring to the table through our weatherization program. So for instance, some of these homes, they're going to be getting the home repair. We'll also, assuming they meet the eligibility criteria, we'll also be able to put our weatherization money into that home to make it more energy efficient. Those homes are valued at $4,000 and some, that work is valued at $4,000 and some dollars per home. So we're looking at bringing $17,340 into the grant as matching number, or leverage money. To come up with the minimum amount to get the maximum points on the application would require another $22,150. Whether the city wants to consider that from its revolving loan fund or not, it's purely your pleasure. It would enable us to do a couple of more of those home repairs, above and beyond the 13 that are in the budget. And I don't believe, Mayor, that that really requires any kind of ordinance or anything at this point in time, because the application simply has a form to list other resources coming in. And if the application would be funded, then it would be, if that money were listed in the application and it would be funded, then the city would have to take action. But at this stage, it's up to you.
Very good. Member Payne.
Doug, did I hear you correctly that we have more people asking for repairs than we have money?
We could do more. It's the easiest thing to market, Nancy.
Okay, and how many, oh, you don't have a list beyond 13, but you could get them quickly.
Well, quickly, we have two years to do it. I'm not concerned. The, you know, without getting into excruciating detail here, but it's easier to market the home repair service. Again, it's less work involved on the home, it's less disruption for the homeowner, and then there's, you don't have a crew there for several weeks, they're there for a week, usually, or a few days, and they're out of there. And then the way in which it's treated in terms of financing and things, it's much easier to sell.
Thank you.
Yes, Member Goss.
It's not clear to me if you would like matching funds from the city, when you would get that authorization to include that.
If the grant would be funded, then the city would need to request a waiver from the Department of Development to use some of its economic development revolving loan funds for its housing grant, which, if that were the case, I assure you that it would occur.
Sure.
Because it encourages to do that. But at this time, I mean, it's, there's nothing that needs to go in the grant application itself in terms of legislation or anything, even at the middle.
If there are no other questions, we need to go ahead and start with our regular meeting of council. But Doug, thanks so much for coming in and doing this again.
You're welcome. You like the crowd I brought?
Yeah. Quite a posse you travel with there.
I've walked up and down the street, Spock.
It's a great program that I'm really pleased that the citizen, the city of Athens can offer to, you know, the group of citizens that are very, very much needed. So thanks again. It's on or about 7:30 PM. Tonight, again, is Monday, April 21st, 2008. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Are there any communications that anyone wishes to share tonight? This is one of the first times in a while I don't have any. Yes, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just briefly wanted to say thank you to the individuals that were involved with the Athens Beautification Day this weekend. I thought it went over really well. I know a number of people that were involved in this room and outside the room, but the work by Max Laird, Pat Hopkins, and Stephanie Skaggs were also hugely instrumental in making that happen, so just want to say thank you to all those involved.
Other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild.
None really, except to reiterate what Kent was talking about, the beautification day. I went to that, attended it, and helped out, and it was a good time. The rain held off.
That's it for you. Okay. City Auditor Kathy Heck.
Thank you. Saturday, we had our finance review for council, and I thought it went pretty well. I don't know what everybody else thinks. We stayed a good hour longer than we had intended, and I just appreciate everybody who did come and the questions, and I'm available anytime. And to let you know, the auditors are coming next week. It's here. So be ready.
When are they not here, is what it really seems like, more than anything.
I know, it feels like, yeah, they're not gone very long, doesn't it? Or they come back.
No, they really don't seem to be, but I really enjoyed the presentation you made, and I think the members, new members of council especially, found it very helpful. So thanks for making your time available. Board Director?
Mr. President, I don't have anything for you this week.
Well, maybe at the end of the meeting you might.
A lot of stuff then.
Yeah, we have an executive session planned that I know that you're going to be having several things to discuss with your council. Thank you. Ordinances for third reading. Oh, 2908, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and State Streets from 8:00 AM on Saturday, July 19th, 2008, to 1:00 AM on Sunday, July 20th, 2008, for a family music festival, Boogie on the Bricks. Suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise, and Title 7, Section 7.05.26B1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt ordinance Oh, 2908.
Motion in the second. Is there further discussion?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Pretty simply and concisely here, we have the Boogie on the Bricks, which is running its, actually, I'm not sure, how many years now is this? It's the third or fourth? Fourth year running? I was in attendance last year, my wife and I enjoyed ourselves. I think it's a good family event, and I look forward to seeing it happen again here.
The title of the ordinance pretty much says it all, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance? Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. On to ordinances for second reading. Oh, 3308, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase one unmarked police vehicle. Member Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the Police Department has indicated that a Ford Escape Hybrid would meet their needs, I move to amend ordinance 3308.
Second.
This would increase the appropriation to $30,780, and increase the, that was Section 2. And Section 3 would increase the appropriation to, the authorization, to $30,780.
Motion in the second to amend ordinance 3308. Is there a further discussion on the amendment only? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Ordinance 3308 has been amended and read for the first time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 4308, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $275,000 of water system revenue notes. 11th, 2008 renewal by the city of Athens, renewing notes previously issued for the purpose and declaring an emergency. We're okay with it. On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 4708, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 14.6583 acres on Della Drive, filed by Beaumont Green Limited Liability Corporation.
Mr. President, this ordinance accepts this property for annexation into the city. This is a process that goes through several steps for folks who may not be familiar with it, where initially, council passed an ordinance saying that we would provide city services upon annexation, then the county released this land to us for annexation, and now it's coming back to us to accept it into the city. It's out on the far east side of Athens, on Della Drive, which is parallel to East State Street, if you're not familiar with the area. And they have actually already built the facility on the land there, so it's one of the new buildings that you can see out there.
Further discussion on ordinance 47. Ordinance 4808, an ordinance designated the zone for the Beaumont Green Annexation Area. Again, Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this comes to us on recommendation from the Planning Commission to designate the zone as R3. You'll notice that it refers to a public hearing, which we have scheduled for May 19th, and we'll have that public hearing before our third reading and adoption of this ordinance.
Comments?
I do have one.
Yes, Member Goss.
I could be incorrect. I thought I heard a rumor that they were going to be donating some land to the city at some point. This was from somebody walking down my street a few months ago.
That's reliable. You can trust that.
A representative from Beaumont Green here, so if you care to speak to that.
I hope I, they're not incorrect here.
I've walked down the street, no. This, I've never heard of that, no. I don't think that's ever been discussed in any of our past meetings, so no, I'm not so aware of it.
I think I presided over all the discussions in here, and I don't remember it, so...
The one thing I do recall is that when, first looking at the plan, when you were looking at it, we had a conversation about the fact there are some wetlands on the back part of the property, and you kind of moved the building location to avoid cutting into the toe of the slope and to preserve the wetlands on the rear portion of the property. So I think that...
Yes, and that has been done.
Yes.
We have a fence up there, and there's a big sign, so that was not destroyed, going construction, or it will be going, running up or anything else.
Other comments?
You can't trust your neighbors.
Paul, Mr. Broadhurst.
Craig Broadhurst, 14 Gravel Avenue. Lights in here are good for the camera, but sometimes hard on some people that have to come here. But anyway, just in that case, I did hear something to that effect myself, and I don't know if it was had to do with the possibility of a proposal to have a conservation easement on the wetlands, as I heard it, or perhaps, I mean, I'm just, that's how I heard it around about, so maybe that's something that could be looked at. I've just had to comment on it, so thank you.
Are there any other comments? Ordinance 4908, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance. One of your weekly ordinances, it seems to be this way. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance, we talked about in committee last week. This increases our appropriation for our annual payment of workers' compensation funds. Our annual payments are rising annually as a result of a very bad accident that we had in the city several years ago. And this, we already have appropriated almost $600,000 for this payment, $591,000, and this is requesting an additional appropriation of $114,000. You see that the ordinance lists the increase per each fund in the city that has personnel working for the city, because that's how this is all decided, it's paid by the employee. And as I understand it, we do not need to suspend this time, but we will suspend on second reading.
Yes.
Other comments? Ordinance 5008, an ordinance approving submission of two grant applications and execution of agreements with the Ohio Arts Council, one for an artist in residence and one for arts partnership for Arts West. Again, Member Sands.
Mr. President, actually, at this time, I'd like to suggest that we consider ordinance 5008 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This ordinance deals with two grants that have been awarded to Arts West, and one of them already has the, one of them is for an artist in residence, and that artist is in residence as we speak. And so some funds from this grant need to be expended. So the, we have, the auditor's office has had communication from those state auditors, and we need to change the way that we've tracked grant funds, all of that needs to come through the auditor's office, and it had not done that before. So this is a way of moving this, giving our approval as the governing body regarding these grants. And it's just approving the grants and executing those agreements, which include making some payments to this artist in residence.
Motion in the second for suspension of the rules on ordinance 5008. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules? Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5008.
Second.
For all the reasons we just discussed.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5008? Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 5108. No, I did just notice on 50, there's no emergency calls. There does not need one? Okay. Ordinance 5108, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $1.5 million of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is an authorization for the auditor to begin looking for the opportunity to renew the notes that we have to pay for the work that was done on East State Street back in 2001, 2001 and 2, I believe, quite a while ago. We started out with several million dollars in this note. We have paid down annually... We have paid down annually. If you notice, the principal amount today is 1.7 million. We're going to renew for 1.5 million, so we will have paid $200,000 on this loan. And so we need to renew that sometime in the near future, but we don't need to suspend it this time.
Very good. Further discussion. Ordinance 5208, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Union and Washington Streets on Saturday, September 20th, 2008, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Is that a mispronounced? No, I guess 12:00 p.m. Okay. For the Second Annual Business Fair. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance will be for, as you said, the Second Business Community Fair, and that's sponsored by the Ohio University Student Senate and co-sponsored by the Athens Chamber of Commerce. Last year, there were 60 businesses participating. It's an information session made available for students, so they learn more about the businesses and services provided in the community. And this event will be held this coming year on September 20th, with the rain date of October 4th. The Senate is covering the cost of the tables, and the city will cover the cost of the street closing.
Further discussion on ordinance 52. Thank you. Ordinance 5308, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. Again, Member Nysley.
Mr. President, this ordinance will appropriate funds for the street repairs that are needed for this year. The streets that are slated for the repairs were reviewed with a street tour that was held on April 5th with the street director, Andy Stone, citizen, city council member, the mayor in attendance. And he reviewed these for us. The street director uses an Ohio Department of Transportation-based rating system for the review and ranking of these repairs. And the list, the finalized list, will be provided at the second reading of this ordinance. This ordinance would provide $250,000 worth of money for rehabilitation of streets, $50,000 for paving.
Further comment? It's a long one. Ordinance 5408, an ordinance authorizing the filing of an application for the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration, FDA, as authorized under the federal transit laws as codified 49 USC Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available for the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period of January 1, 2009 through December 31, 2009. Again, Member Nysley, and please don't amend this thing.
I'll try not to, Mr. President. Thank you. No matter if I can do anything about it. This is federal money that comes through the State Department of Transportation. As it says, it's for other than urbanized areas or rural areas. And what this does is provides assistance for fairs for the elderly and disabled. It's a grant that we renew annually.
Further discussion? It is one I have to read every year at this time, it seems like, so we are kind of used to this one also. Ordinance 5508, an ordinance amending ordinance O.12906, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. This is introduced by all members of council. Member Phillips will be speaking for us.
Mr. President, members of council, this is the section of code that sets fees for a variety of areas of our city code. We've kind of consolidated that into one place, so we don't lose track of the various places that those things could be located. The part that we're amending is in Section 23.08.02, which is an administrative fine. My understanding is there was some discrepancy here between the changes in other parking tickets and the tickets that the code office can issue if people are parked illegally in the front setback. So this will make this consistent with other parking tickets, so that they can use the same tickets that the police officers use, and they can be collected in the same manner. So we won't have the confusion that was going on there. And the other portion is just a language change in the entitled 25, which is the flood crime ranks, changing it from saying "permit required" to just saying "development permit." It's not changing the amount. Those are the two changes.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 55? I would look to possibly, Member Bain, to discuss amending the agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to move at this time to amend the agenda to include O.5608. Second.
Motion and a second to amend the city council's agenda to add ordinance 5608. Further discussion?
We had a discussion about this generally at the last committee meeting more in the realm of what we might be asking for contract for the potential positioning of another vendor on the same power. But I think we alluded to it, to the need for additional funding, and now we have a way to, actually.
Let's go ahead and vote on amending. And then, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure everybody knew.
But we have an idea what we're amending the agenda to add to. So is there further discussion on amending the agenda only? All those in favor of amending council's agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been amended. Introduce your ordinance.
Do you need it?
I don't have it. Okay. I now have it. Okay. An ordinance amending, I'm sorry, an ordinance amending ordinance O.3607, authorizing a contract to upgrade the city's telephone and computer networking system, project number 228, and amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance. Member Bain.
Mr. President, we had a discussion of this at the last meeting, although it wasn't exactly on this particular topic. I think we were thrashing around, trying to figure out what to do with another matter. But at this time, we are, as you all know, trying to upgrade our telephone and computer networking system. And we have several different reasons why we want to do this, possibly for monitoring as well as soon as the basic task is done, monitoring the pertinences in the wastewater and other plants. So here's what we say in the whereas. The current tower on Roosevelt Drive is not adequate to provide the communication upgrade. Tower construction on Current Drive is necessary to support the communication upgrade. We're actually going to increase the amount we're spending in this case because of the Current Drive, the Current Drive location. Not only is that the tower construction on Current Drive is going to happen on a base that needs additional work, and that's where this is coming from, from the basic inadequacies of the area where it is, and we'll have to put a much more stable foundation on. So it's more of an environmental finding than an actual communications finding, and that's what's going on here. We're going to run it through on the usual timeframe, or perhaps suspend with everyone else next week, who knows, or two weeks from now. But fundamentally, that's what's going on. It's the basic sand and gravel location where it's going to be built.
And the overall cost increase is about $108,800, if I mentally did my math correctly.
Well, you hit it before. It's got to be right this time.
Yeah, I'm still off by about $600 the last time. Is there further comments on ordinance 56? Then on to one reading resolutions. Resolution 0508, a resolution requesting the Athens City Planning Commission consider amending the zoning code to rezone the city-owned property in front of the Athens Depot from an M-zone to an open space zone, and to seek guidance from a historic preservationist to protect this major landmark. This ordinance is introduced by all members of council. You want it? Member Phillips wishes to speak to it.
Mr. President, I move adoption of R.0508. Second. This came out of our discussion about the general area around the depot with the rezoning request that we were looking at last week, and we decided that we would like to request that the planning commission consider zoning that area in front as open space and look at what we can do to make sure that we protect that area in terms of the historic value of the depot.
Member Bain, did I?
I just had an intake of breath. I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we have, we own the land, the city owns it, and we have it under contract for parking, which would be permitted in the zone. So there's really not a lot of changes happening here. We're just making it permanent.
And the preservationists, we would hope to have them?
Assess the potential impact of the development on the preservation item, which is the depot, which is on the National Register of Historic Places.
Very good. Other comments? Announcements and other businesses. Who wants a committee meeting next week?
We didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a one-reading resolution, which means we vote now. And there is no further comment. All in favor of adoption of resolution 0508?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution has been adopted. Announcements and other business. Who would like a committee meeting next week?
First, Mr. President, I have a motion to make.
Oh.
I'm passing around the information about the Comprehensive Plan Review and Advisory Commission, and I did receive enough applications to go ahead with that. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following individuals to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Review and Advisory Commission. These are to be staggered terms. So three people serving three-year terms, Heather Cantino, Ed Baum, and Brian Ogil. Two people serving two-year terms, Lance Rep and Delia Rap. And one person serving a one-year term, Christine Fall. I have to leave one of the slots vacant, because our ordinance requires that we have someone who has specific expertise in performance measurement, and we haven't found that person yet. So otherwise, we do have representatives from the neighborhood associations and from the business community, and qualified electors from the city. So that's the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this motion?
Now, I'll just mention that I passed around a copy of the ordinance that does define the people who are supposed to be on the commission. And its purpose is really to establish benchmarks to measure our progress in implementing the comprehensive plan and to increase citizen involvement in monitoring our performance, the cities as a whole.
Further comments? Member Bain.
I would like to ask if we, once it's established, if we could have the commission put their materials on the website and make sure that the committees are, the meetings, of course, I imagine this is not going to be an issue, but just to understate it, make them public, their meetings, and make sure that people are aware of those meetings, so that we can have the wider community participate as well.
And with the new software upgrade that we are looking at on our website, it's going to be, make it a lot easier, I understand, to start adding many of these things and updating them and changing them by the people that are interested in each item. So I see no reason that we can't. We should. That's why we maintain the thing. So yes, absolutely.
Is it back in pass, 56?
Yeah. Okay. Did you want it back in pass?
No, no, I'm just, we're talking it up.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to make citizens' appointment to the Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission. All those in favor of the appointees as listed?
Aye.
Those opposed? Please congratulate all the people that are giving their time to the city in this regard. Member Bain.
I would like a city services committee meeting, and I would like to combine with the Law Hues Committee, talk about basically a little bit of a work session on what we saw at waste.
Very good.
But I also like to show you some slides of what Franklin Bremner used to look like. It won't take long. I just thought maybe it would help to understand the context of it.
How far back are we going to see how it looked like?
My first GIS track.
Oh, my.
A hundred years ago. They will be, take two minutes. I just, I think it's startling.
Oh, on committee nights, I don't care how long we take.
That's right, you can leave.
It's only here that the council rules require that I stay. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I'd like to request a transportation committee meeting.
Okay. Member Phillips?
I'd like to request planning and development to discuss a revocable license request and some miscellaneous.
Okay. Any other committees?
Mr. President, I have nothing but miscellaneous at this point for finance, but probably something will arise.
We almost always need to call yours a standing committee, don't we, Mr. Sands? Okay. Any other announcements or other business before city council? Now, an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or the city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Please. Council rules provide that you state your name, address, and we can give you up to three minutes.
Mr. President, members of council, Mr. Mayor, sir, Madam Auditor, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening briefly, obviously. I am here on behalf of folks in town who have talked to me about the possible relocation of the goddess of eternal youth from the water treatment plant.
I'd just like everyone to know that this is Mr. Goldsberry, Phil Goldsberry with us, no problem.
I'm sorry. Excuse me for that, Bill.
Not a problem.
Phil Goldsberry, 7884 Angel Ridge Road, Athens, Ohio.
Yes.
Thank you. To briefly go with council on this, there was a letter that was sent to Crystal Kennard, I believe is the pronunciation, by a member of the Athens community back in February 20, or 7th of '06, stating that they thought that the statue could be relocated to the library. I'm paraphrasing from the letter. And they suggested there could be funds found and technical expertise found to move that statue to the library. And then they went on to say that there could be a dedication ceremony honoring those who had preserved that statue, and also county officials and city officials. The response to that letter essentially said, "I have spoken with the director of water, and we're the paint the water plant, save us the best place for Hevy, and we're not willing to donate her to the library," I quote from the letter. And it also stated that, "You should know from the previous caretakers, if Hevy made it physically impossible to move her without destroying the statue, thus safeguarding her permanent placement." I want to introduce that. Then also, for your information, here's a letter from D.H. Goldsberry, who was the superintendent of that water plant back in 1972, when I was in the city, up through 1980, when he retired. And he says in his letter that "Citizens of Athens, or anyone else interested, have always been invited to visit the plant to view and enjoy this old work of art. I'm sure future department superintendent will be willing, in case of important historic events, to carefully move and exhibit this fragile statue for the enjoyment of interested people." Clearly, something doesn't jive there, because D.H. Goldsberry suggested it could be moved. And beyond that, I just want to say that in 1972, Mayor Don Barrett took office in the City of Athens and appointed me as Service Safety Director. Shortly after his appointment of me to Service Safety Director, the superintendent came to my office and implored me to support them going forward, the employees at the plant, to in fact restore that statue, which had fallen into disarray and had been broken up badly. It was in storage down there. And so I responded to the superintendent that, "What will the citizens of the City of Athens gain from this?" He assured me that it would always be available for the citizens to see it. Now, I've driven by there a number of times in the past couple of years. And that whole situation is under height, heart, lock and key, chains, barbed bar fences, chain link fences and everything else, and I don't think citizens are seeing that. Now, I can understand the reluctance to have it go down to the library, but if it were to go to the community center, where a goddess of eternal youth probably would be greatly appreciated, it would seem to me that that would make sense, because a lot of people down there try and do retain their youthfulness and regain it. So based on that, I would simply suggest that it might be a good idea for council to appoint a spatial committee from the community that would in fact have technical expertise, like a structural engineer, arts people from perhaps a college of fine arts, and a coordinating group like that, someone who can raise funds and put a committee together like that, and charge them with going ahead with the removal of that statue down to the community center. I think that the town and all the people in it can get a lot of good use out of it down there. It could go into the lobby area, or perhaps back toward where the machines are, in that glassed-in area. And I think the citizens of the city would appreciate that greatly. Now, the fact of it is, there's been some controversy as to whether or not the county owned it, or whether the city owned it. The literature shows that it was dedicated in 1895 to the city by the group of ladies that were abolitionists in terms of drinking. I forget what they call that group. But it was dedicated to the city, and it's a city property. And it seemed to me like the council has the authority to in fact dispose of property, buy property, relocate property, and so forth, and it should not just be left up to a department head in the water plant to freeze that up out of sight forever. That's what I came to talk about.
Mr. Goldsberry, I really want to thank you for bringing this up. Mr. Goldsberry, I really want to thank you for bringing this subject to us. I was grabbed today at Rotary.
Oh, were you?
Oh, yes, by Mary Diles.
Okay.
And this is not the first time I've heard about this.
Yeah.
And I hardly ever take sides on an issue, but on this pressing issue, I have to agree with you. Ms. Diles has already identified people that can restore parts of it, that can get it out of the concrete, I understand, without destroying the statue. I was down at the water plant this past week, meeting with Ms. Kennard on a different issue. And folks, due to the nature of what water plants have become since 9/11, by necessity, the plant is everything that you described. It is now behind high fence, barbed wire on top. Even though I had an appointment with Ms. Kennard, somebody had to come out and unlock the fence for me to get in before I could get into, and all of this is for a very good reason.
Absolutely.
But the statue is not being enjoyed by anybody at this point, but a few of the water plant employees, and I think we need to assign this to our community issues committee to maybe take a look at it next week and hopefully come up with a resolution before too long.
Or ask the municipal arts commission to take a look at it, because they have a whole policy about public art in the city.
Well, it's art we already own.
Yeah.
You know, so that may committee it to death. I kind of want to see if we could get it moved. But why don't we start with a community, since this has been brought before council, let's start with the community issues, and if that's where they wish to forward it on to, then so be it. But it will be discussed and a decision will be made.
That's great. I appreciate it very much, Mr. President. If anyone's interested in looking at pictures of her, I'll stay around for a few minutes. It's an extremely beautiful statue, and it would seem to me like that since it is a property of the citizens, that citizens should get a chance to enjoy it, and I think that's the best location for it personally. Just might just add one thing. Mayor Don Barrett was an awfully good friend of mine, and I worked for him for better than 10 years. He was the kind of person that was absolutely certain in his mind that he would do things for the benefit of the citizens of the city of Athens. And his first question to me when I presented the opportunity for our employees down there in their spare time to work on that statue was, "How will it help the citizens of Athens, Phil?" And I said, "Because they assured me it will forever be available for the citizens to visit." And so I think it's good faith to recognize the mayor from the past, and the mayor's from the past and the future, and link the past and the future together so that we can really get some enjoyment out of that statue and still safeguard the plant as it needs to be done.
Thank you very much. Mr. Goldsberry, thank you very much for giving us time. Thank you. Yes, Greg, Mr. Broadhurst.
Thank you, Phil. I really like that idea. I haven't had before. I want to speak to you just briefly about some communications I sent to city council in the last week considering management and issues around management in regards to West State Street Park. And I just want to make a statement that I am not opposed to the activities that are taking place in the park. Recreation departments often form cooperative agreements with, with people, user groups to extend their budgets. This is all across the country. But, you know, when a user group comes to council, as happened a couple of years ago, and makes a proposal which was rejected and goes ahead and does it anyway, that's not a good precedent. And that's really, it's a land use issue. It's a land use and management issue. I just want to make that clear. It's not about what's going on. And I would encourage council to remedy that at its earliest convenience in order to see that that sort of thing doesn't happen again. That's really what I'm saying. And, and also, the reference I made to management as far as concessions and fee structures, I encourage the recreation committee to take that up. And actually, I'll probably speak to the committee chairman in the near future about that, but I, I think there's some kinks that need to be ironed out, and I understand that, you know, we've been in transition and we've got a number of council people on board now who weren't on during the lack of decision-making, whatever you want to call it, that end up with this situation coming, coming up. And it all began with a few tree roots, I guarantee you. And the other thing, just, the other stuff just started falling in and all got connected together. But I just wanted to assure people that I totally support all types of sports programming in the city, not single user, though. Because remember, we had, we had a soccer community that was, you know, not, not taken into the conversation. And now they're playing on a soccer field that's on an east-west aspect, which isn't really good to play in, in the afternoon sun, especially in the summertime. So, you know, lack of planning as well. So just wanted to inform you a little, with a little more in depth about my perspective on that whole issue and wish you well in remedying it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Drake Tony, and I'm the president of Ohio Men's Crew, and I have some of my teammates with me. I apologize for some of our poor dress. We just got off the water and hurried to make it here. But we came to bring invitations to the mayor and council regarding our annual regatta at Dow Lake. I'm going to leave them on the table near the mayor. They're individually dressed. And just quickly, Ohio Men's and Women's Crew would like to extend its most cordial invitation to council, the mayor, and the, the citizens of Athens to attend the 2008 MACRA Championship Regatta hosted by Ohio Men's and Women's Crew Team in conjunction with their respective alumni. Ohio Crew has a membership of close to 65 rowers. We are a club sport. However, we do compete on a very competitive level. Most crews in the nation are club sports, and we are recognized at Ohio University as one of the premier club sports, last year winning Club Sports Team of the Year, and the women's team winning Community Service Team of the Year. We do a lot to give back to our community. We like to showcase our community to the people that come to visit. This year, 16 teams have registered, making it one of the largest regattas in the nation and the largest athletic event put on by Ohio University. Again, we would like to cordially invite you, and we hope to see you, members of council and members of the community, out at our regatta. So thank you for your time. We'll leave the invitations.
Question. Time.
When is it? So everybody else knows when to meet.
It'll be May 3rd, and we'll be starting events at 8:00 a.m., and events should be running all the way until 4:00 p.m. So if you get a chance to stop out, votes like Ohio State, Michigan, Michigan State, premier Midwest teams will be there. So it should be a real, real good time.
Very good. Yes, Member Butler.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Am I correct also in understanding that you, the crew was instrumental in getting the beautification day started a couple of years ago?
Yes, sir.
So thank you again for your, your work for the city and beautification, and good luck at the event.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thanks for coming in, and thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council tonight? The next item on our agenda, and really the last item, is an executive session. I think this may be the first one this session of council has had. What we need for an executive session, and this one is to discuss labor issues, personnel and pending or threatened litigation, and it may go on for a while.
Mr. President, we can take personnel.
Okay. It is for labor issues and pending threatened litigation. To go into executive session takes a motion mentioning who we wish to attend and a rule called vote. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session to include the law director, the president of council, the mayor, and the city auditor.
Also, personnel director.
And the personnel director. I didn't see you.
Really Henderson, yes. Okay. Member Butler? Yes or no?
Yes, although there is a Cavs game tonight. I'll keep it brief.
And I have seen these monitors used for other things. Member Coon?
Yes.
Yes, Member Bain? Phillips?
Yes.
Sands?
Yes.
Gosney?
Yes.
Okay. We will take about 10 minutes. It is now 8:19. When that clock over there says 8:30, I'm going to have to ask everybody to leave the room so we can go into executive session. So that does give people about 10 minutes to ask questions of your council members. When we come out of executive session, the only thing that we will do is adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President.